Everybody but JV. Hi JV.
Heather, we doing this in the dark tonight?
I told him, I told him. You don't count words.
Yeah, yeah. May as well have some fun tonight, huh? We ready guys? Joey, you ready? Good evening and welcome to Club Smyrna Planning and Zoning. What's with the lights? Sorry. Welcome to the planning and zoning meeting for the city of Smyrna. Today is Monday, April 11th, 2022. It's 6:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. At this time, we'd like to ask that all electronic devices be turned off or airplane mode so they don't interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask that you come forward one at a time, state your name and address. For the record, sign the sign-in sheet at the podium and please direct all your comments to the board. The first item on our agenda is 2021-597. This is zoning request Z21017. This is to be tabled to the May 9th, 2022, planning and zoning meeting. Can I get a motion to table this item, please? Have a motion, Mr. Estriga. Second, Mr. Howard. All in favor, please vote. Item's tabled 6-0. Next item on our agenda is 2021-518. This is a zoning request Z21015 to allow for the rezoning from R15 to CBD for an antique shop. Land lot 522. It's .6 acres at 2986 King Street. This is Antiques Wood and Rustic LLC. Mr. Staub's.
Good evening, Joey Staub's, planner two. The applicant is Antiques Wood and Rustics. Your recommendation will go to Mayor and Council on the 16th, May 16th. Subject property is owned R15. Currently has an existing house on it. Applicant is requesting to rezone it. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Better. The property is owned R15, has an existing house on it now. The applicant is requesting a rezoning. They requested neighborhood shopping originally. Staff's recommendation is to rezone it to Central Business District. The future land use for the area is mixed use. To the north and west is mixed use. To the east is public institutional with the church. To the south is Neighborhood Activity Center with several commercial businesses. Oops. What happened there? Anyway, this is the existing property. The house is there currently. They're looking to renovate that for ADA compliance and then add a parking to the rear of the property. We'll have 10 parking spaces. To the north and to the west, they're preserving a 10-foot landscape buffer. They'll use the existing access drive on King Street. There is no variances requested. This is the existing property. And pictures of adjacent properties. Things are all messed up. We're recommending approval from R15 to CBD with the standard conditions. And then special conditions. We'll have the CBD setbacks. Front foot 12, front foot on Concord Road 12, side zero, rear zero. Those are the standard CBD setbacks, but they're not planning on modifying the existing building. Have a maximum height of 35 feet. Have a 10-foot landscape buffer, as mentioned. They'll be responsible for any fire access requirements and water and sewer improvements and any stormwater improvements. It'll be prohibited from outside, storage of goods or merchandise. It'll be based on the site plan submitted with the application and then additional stipulations provided by the applicant. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Bentley.
Yeah, could you put the zoning map back up? It went by pretty quick.
Yes, sir.
So, most of the property to the west and north, I guess, is residential, right?
That's correct. Commercial to the south and then church to the east.
So, I assume it would be zoned, is it what, across Love Street there? Is that what it would be zoned the same as?
Those are, I think, limited commercial or neighborhood shopping. The dark red is general commercial.
No, I'm talking about, it looks like a
I think those
big pattern there.
Those are NS neighborhood shopping. Neighborhood shopping.
Shopping, okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Staub's? Okay. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about the application, please. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Parks Hough at the law firm of Sam's Larkin and Huff. And normally you'd see Mr. Sam's this evening, but he is unfortunately in Florida and with his family, so I am filling in for him and I'm trying to do the best I can. I'm following his process and in fact, he gave me detailed notes what to do to hand out the, give the handouts first, so you got the handouts now, so.
No doubt.
And Mr. Chairman, I noted, I was excited when I first got this case because there's the CBD district, I think in Colorado, there's some different districts. Y'all might want to need to change the name of that to Business District Central maybe, but I could see your chuckle when that was, when that was read. But this is a rezoning that comes before you for Mr. and Mrs. Ferguson are sitting here for their property on Concord. They plan to open an antique store and gift store on the property. Very similar, if you're very similar to the area, right as you go around the curve, keep going on your right-hand side, there's other stores very similar to this. So, that's the reason why I think your staff recommended approval is the fact that this is a continuation of already existing retail as you have along there. As you noted, there's commercial further down King Street, but in fact, this is a transition property. How do you transition between the intensity of the Concord and going back towards downtown? So, this is a great use that will create that transition with a, you know, use of the existing house. It's a very attractive house and when it's restored, we'll provide a wonderful setting for the proposed antique store, which is going to be called Lavender and Cotton Antiques. Your staff has reviewed it in conformity with your land use plan, finds it fits your land use plan. We have reviewed the staff recommendation, agree with all the recommendations and conditions that they have attached to the recommendation. And we have, my client has communicated with the neighbors around them, has not received anything but positive feedback about the possibility of this store, this house being rehabilitated and restored and being put back to use in this manner. So, I know Mr. Sands would probably go on for another 20 minutes or so, but unless, unless y'all want me to, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. And Mr. and Ms. Ferguson are also here and can answer any detailed questions you have about their proposal. But we worked very hard with the city to come with this recommendation for approval before you tonight. We ask that you forward that recommendation for approval to the mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. All right, are there any questions for the applicant? Yeah, absolutely, go ahead. Mr. Phillips?
Yes, two things related to the parking. Did you consider asking for a variance in the parking? The 10 parking spaces seems to pave almost the entire site. So, did you think of asking for a variance to see if you could get lesser number? And did you actually think of approaching the church to see if you could actually use their parking since you're not going to be open when they're open?
That is not something that we had anticipated and we didn't ask for a variance. Normally, you know, we try not to ask for variances and try to handle the parking as we see need on our own property when possible. We still have the buffer and the 10-foot buffer on all sides and meet all the other development standards, so, you know, we're not over paving or over parking the property in terms of the development standards. But it's something we can look at between now and mayor and council.
Yeah, it's just extremely tight. I mean, the back of the building covered with bollards so that people don't run into the building and taking out the big tree and the buffer right up against Concord seems going to be challenging to screen that parking that close to the road.
Yeah, understand.
Thank you.
We can look at that as additionally between now and mayor and council.
Any other questions?
Sit on, okay. The last three pictures in the deck are those interiors of another setup that is currently being used? Is that the house itself right now?
No, that is, that is similar to what they would be operating as.
Okay, that's the intended vibe of the place, if you will.
Again, consistent with the other stores that are just further, further south, if you will.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Huff. Oh, hold on, Mr. Bentley.
Maybe I should have asked staff this question, but I guess obviously when we rezone from residential to commercial, then it is commercial or whatever the designation is.
Yeah.
From then on. And I guess I'm just wondering what happens if the, if the antique shop doesn't make it for one reason or another?
I mean, it would be
They own the property?
Yeah. And it would be developed or used in a fashion that's consistent with the proposed zoning category. That was one of the challenges was that we initially applied for NS, which is what you have across the street. And the staff actually recommended the CBD district, so that was part of their comfort level is that the CBD was the appropriate category. And given, I mean, given the property's location on an arterial road and it is truly, you know, intended to be commercial in use.
I don't know how to do this, but I don't know, Rusty or Joey could maybe add something about that CBD designation?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, if the, if the antique shop goes away, then they would be allowed to operate within the permitted uses in the CBD zoning district, which is pretty much all the different types of uses you see down downtown. So, they'd have, they'd have the opportunity for small-scale retail, office use, schools, public buildings, stuff like that, all different types of uses if they wanted to. It's not as intensive as GC, so it's not going to allow the auto-oriented uses and stuff like that.
Mr. Bentley, anything else?
Yeah, was there, I guess, any exploration prior to this exploration? The value of the property and I guess commitment level to seeing it develop as an antique store to the point of, is this a long-term play or is it the intent, if it's developed, works as an antique store for a few years and then turn it over?
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, house is going to take some work to make it into an antique store to install the parking. I mean, that's not an insignificant investment in the property, so it is a long-term play. I mean, that's, that's their goal, that's their, that's what they want to do.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Huff. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. We'll get you to sign the sign-in sheet at the podium. Good evening and welcome.
My name is Jeff Meadows. I live on 2975 Reed Street, right behind the property.
Good evening, Mr. Meadows.
I also am speaking for Randy and Jim Carmichael, who are right down the street.
Unfortunately, sir, we can only take your representation, can't.
Well, they asked me to just let it be known.
Got it.
And we don't have any specific objection to another Love Street on the corner there. I mean, that would be fine, but what, relative to what was just spoken about, it's the future that we have concerns about and we are aware, well, first of all, I'm pretty sure the same people that own that property also own another property next to it. We're also aware that there's been some, some discussion by the other neighbor, which is directly behind me on King Street, who has made some inquiries about what he could do with his property. He's thinking, he's been thinking about selling it for a while. So, the thing we're most concerned about is somebody in the future doing some kind of assembly, right? And putting some kind of quick retail, you know, like a 7-Eleven kind of thing in there. And then it becomes a totally different scenario than, you know, just an antique shop. We all think that the scenario that you see up in Roswell where they've renovated those old homes and turned them into retail and restaurant and all that stuff, that's fine as long as it stays that way. But I don't know that there's anything within the code that, with that specific commercial code that keeps any of those other things happen, from happening. And of course, we hope that they're successful. We're not saying that we expect them to go out of business in five years, but I've been here over 15 years and I know Carmichael's have been around forever. And actually, Michael Hatcher down the street from me is of the same mindset. If it can be, I don't know if there's any restrictions that can be put on it, but we don't object to it per se. We just want to make sure that we're not staring at a really major commercial operation popping up here in about five years or something.
Okay. So, the first thing that we can address is if somebody wanted to come through and there is adjacent parcels that were involved, we'd have to go through this process again. I think I'm correct in that. But maybe we should address, what are the restricted uses on, in this, as Mr. Huff said, CBD district?
Well, one point of clarification, the rezoning restricts the development of the site to what is shown here.
Right.
So, yeah, they couldn't come in and tear down that existing building and build something else at that point without coming back through the zoning process. The CBD uses, well, let me go back in a second as well. It's in the urban design district, so in addition to going through this process, they're going to have to go to the Urban Design Commission and get approval for the improvements that they're making to the property. So, along with going through this process and that process, they're going to have to get approvals from PNZ, the Urban Design Commission and Mayor and Council. And that will be, they'll have to do that for any improvements they make. So, if this use goes away and another use comes in and they want to modify the property from an architectural design standpoint or a site design standpoint, they'll have to go through that process. The Central Business District category limits the type of uses that are allowed on the property. So, that's like, these are the permitted uses that are allowed. So, colleges, universities, daycare centers, dwelling, attached, detached, multifamily, townhouse, eating and drinking establishments provided or located 100 feet away from any residential structures, so this probably wouldn't fly for an eating establishment. Non-commercial public recreation parks, playgrounds, YMCA buildings or social fraternal, social services, union or civic organizations, institutional uses such as churches, synagogues, Sunday school buildings, retail sales for apparel, furniture stores and stores for home furnishings and office supplies. And that's provided, there's no outside storage of goods permitted, repair services, professional business and general offices, banks, radio, television station, clinics, medical, dental, doctors' offices, hotel rooms, services such as beauty shops, barber shops, restaurants and studios for artists, designers, bus passenger stations, off-street parking, utilities, temporary buildings for storage of materials for, in conjunction with construction of building. Outside, open market, private or private or public property for selling of fresh food. But that has to be permit, that has to be approved by the city council, telecommunications, breweries and a private dog park. So, those are the, I mean, that's, those are the uses that are allowed. So, it's pretty limited use when compared to the general commercial use, which allows a lot of auto-oriented uses and has pretty much about 135 different uses that could go into it. So, the downtown central, and CBD is supposed to be located in the Central Business District downtown area, so it's really specific uses to this area that are compatible with the commercial uses here and then the residential that surrounds it as well.
So, the other process they have to go through to do anything different, as you just described, that would also work as a buffer for anything weird. I'm saying, I'm using the word weird. I mean, that was a pretty broad spectrum you just described there. And some of those would not be of a concern and some of them would, because those can be a pretty wide footprint in terms of what kind of space they'd want to take up and everything else, particularly if they did an assembly. But, so I guess we're going to rely on any of the other future requirements that anybody else would want to do to change it to something else. We can depend on that to, for them to be restrictive enough to keep it from being anything other than what would be normal.
If the building stayed as is and the use just changed, that would be permitted and wouldn't really need any other approvals other than, unless there was a conditional use that required mayor and council approval, like some of them said they needed. But if it was a use that did not require that, then they would just go through their business licensing process and we'd do building inspection, fire code inspections, and then they would, they would open up. But if it required an improvement to the site, either through site design or an architectural issue with the building and they were doing an addition or whatever, the the improvements that they were doing would have to get approved by the UDC.
Right, okay.
But if they, if they wanted to tear down the building and build something back, then they would have to go through zoning and UDC again, all over again. Their UDC meeting is set up for April 26th, I believe. So, it'll be in the next couple of weeks.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Any other comments? At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion. I do believe this is your award, Mr. Bentley. Yes, sir.
Well, this is kind of tough. I, I think like most people don't have really an objection to the, to the antique shop per se there. It's just, once that property goes to commercial, even though it would have to come back through zoning, then it's a little easier to get that, those things through. I'm not saying a gas station would go in there, but a lot of these other things probably would. And then it kind of sets up maybe the rest of that, that property there that is all residential now to tend to be more commercial. So, so based on those concerns, I'm going to make a motion to deny.
So, we have a motion to deny. Do we have a second? I do believe that means we do not have a second because I don't see one popping up on my handy-dandy screen. Is that right? All right, so that motion has failed. Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve, Ms. Estriga? Do we have a second? Mr. Seagraves? Please vote. Look, I am a product of public education. You could leave that up there a little bit longer for me, please. Sorry. That's still there. That's bigger over there. That's nice. The, the application is approved 4-2, I do believe is what I read. Her screen's much larger than mine. I think you guys heard the concerns. More, more, I think more than anything, they wish you luck, right? They want you to do well and hopefully it stays an antique store for the rest of my life, because the fear is that something else goes in there that's less than desirable. And I think that's, I guess, probably part of the concern of Mr. Bentley. You know, it's a neat old house and it's probably reached its economic use as a residential product and hopefully it's a very successful venture for you guys. Good luck. All right. And that motion is approved 4-2. The next item on our agenda is 2022-145. This is zoning request Z2205, to allow rezoning from GC and OI to TS conditional for the development of 107-room hotel and rebranding of 135-room hotel. development of 107-room hotel and rebranding of 135-room hotel, 3.115 acres and landlot 846, 880, and 881. This is Mogar Farms Funding LLC, 2855 Spring Hill Parkway, and 2685 Spring Road. Mr. Staub's, the background, please.
Yes, sir. The applicant is Mogar Farms Funding LLC. Your recommendation will go to mayor and council on May 16th. Subject property is a little over three acres. It's zoned general commercial and office institutional. It has an existing hotel on it that's non-conforming. It's a six-story hotel with 135 rooms. They are looking to add an additional hotel that will connect to the existing hotel. That would be seven stories and 107 rooms. So, to accommodate the existing hotel and then the new hotel, we're recommending rezoning to TS, conditional, which is tourist services. The future land use is regional activity center. I'll go through the site plan. This is the existing six-story hotel. They're looking to propose a new hotel. It'll be seven stories, 107 rooms. It'll be connected by a shared entrance and lobby, and they will both share a courtyard, patio, pool area. There'll be 196 parking spaces, which is in abundance of what we require. There'll be a right-in, right-out drive on Spring Road, unless they can connect to the adjacent, the Emerson Center Drive on the right. We'd prefer that, but in lieu of that, this is acceptable from the city engineer. There'll be also a full access drive on Spring Hill Parkway. Dumpster enclosure is in the back of the property and then underground stormwater detention at the back of the property. They have the proposed setbacks, front 25 feet, side of five feet, and rear of 100 There are four variances requested, one for the front setback reduction to 25 feet, the side setback reduction to five feet, to reduce the 15-foot landscape buffer along Spring Hill Parkway, and to increase the building height from five stories to seven stories. Here's a colored rendering of that site plan. And the proposed elevations. This is the pictures of the site as it is today, and some adjacent properties. That's recommending approval of the rezoning to TS with the standard conditions, special conditions regarding the setbacks, water and sewer improvements. They'll have to meet fire access improvements, provide a five-foot sidewalk and two-foot grass strip around the perimeter where there isn't one. Three foot, three feet of right-of-way dedication along Spring Hill Parkway. The entrance on Spring Road, it will either need to be combined with the Emerson Center or have appropriate geometry along Spring Road. They'll have to meet all fire, all stormwater improvements. The dumpster enclosure will have to be three-sided brick enclosure. They'll have one access point on Spring Hill Parkway. Any trees within the limits of disturbance will have to be removed. They'll be subject to the site plan submitted with the application, the elevations submitted with the application, and the additional stipulation provided by the applicant's attorney. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Staub's? Okay. Thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about the application. Good evening and welcome back, Mr. Huff.
Good evening. For the record again, my name is Parks, Huf, Law Firm, I'm Sam Larkin Huff, and I represent the applicant in regards to this rezoning before you this evening. And per the instructions from Mr. Sam, I'll give you handouts again. But this is an opportunity to add some hotel space that is needed in this area. I know y'all are very, very familiar with what goes on in the area, but, and we talk a lot about the Battery and the sports events that are there, but also, I know you are very aware of the headquarters and office buildings that are going in the area, too. And those also very much drive the need for hotel space, as people have different, you know, companies have training and things like that that bring people into the area for periods of time for going to the headquarters and such. So, there is a need in the area, and this is taking the opportunity to combine two parcels together, to rebrand an older hotel, to be able to reinvest in that hotel, to combine it with another new hotel, and put that together. And that's the reason why I brought this up here, is you can see how the entrance will come in, and it'll be an opportunity for a great place to come in and drop off and pick up. And it provides some additional space that is greatly needed in the area, Quick Rock, you know, Spring Road, right over the Battery. So, the area is consistent with what you have in your land use plan for what you, that you have these type of uses in this area. And it is, you know, if you don't put it here, the need is still there. So, then it goes somewhere else, and you really can't have a better location for a hotel, given that, you know, you have some great walkability to so many things right here, quick Uber ride and other access to transit to be able to get around the area and to go to the Galleria for conventions, corporate headquarters that are in the Battery, and the sporting events. So, you know the needs there. This is a great way to provide that need and take a hotel and rebrand it, invest heavily in the existing hotel, add a brand-new component to it. And when you do that, you have so many additional rooms that you can up the services, the amenities, the, all the packages that travelers expect these days. So, we have had a great dialogue with your staff to come forward with this recommendation for approval today. Do want to mention that, you know, great, great opportunity, too, to have, we certainly would like to be able to combine access points to the property to, off of Spring Road and maybe have a better access there, but also keep in mind, we also have access back to Spring Hill Parkway, and then that gets you Cumbun Boulevard. So, it's well-positioned for multiple access points and getting to multiple different areas. So, we are very glad to have your staff recommendation. We have, Garvis has submitted a letter of agreeable stipulation dated March 18th, and that is incorporated in your staff recommendation, and we agree with all the staff recommendations that go along with this. So, we ask that you follow your staff's careful analysis of this proposal, recognizing it's, it's consistent with your land use plan, it's consistent with the needs that you have in this area, and it's taking a rather narrow piece of property, being able to combine it with the property behind, invigorate an older hotel, and make it, make it a better product overall. So, appreciate your evaluation of this and look forward to your recommendation to mayor and council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Phillips?
And I apologize, it might have been Joel I should have asked this of, but are you planning on participating in any improvements for the traffic issues on Spring Road there in between the, say, the Panda Express and down to the Battery? With the adjacent property also bringing in a drive, and as you said, you said you were willing to discuss coming up with a joint drive on Spring Road, and I would make it actually conditional if I was gonna make the motion to approve. I would say, make it conditional upon there being a joint drive. I don't think there needs to be two driveways back-to-back right there, either straddling the property line or on one or the other properties, but to have two driveways there is crazy. But, like I said, have you looked at other, any other traffic improvements that you would be willing to do on Spring Road because of the U-turns that are having to be made in front of Panda Express because of the median, concrete median, and so forth?
Yeah, I mean, couple things. That's the reason why I pointed out that we do have access back to Spring Hill Parkway, which makes our site different than other sites, because there are other ways out and to be able to circulate around. In terms of whether we are forced to reach an agreement with adjacent property owner, that doesn't normally work well, because you really can't do that. It's up to the property owners to work together, see if something can be done. Not aware of the grade differential that might create some issues there, because it does start to come downhill, come downgrade there, so I don't know how that works. I don't know what their long-term plans are in terms of whether we'd agree to other recommendations for traffic improvements in that area. I mean, we have, this has gone through and been reviewed by your engineering department, and anything that they recommended and asked for, we would be glad to talk to them about. And so far, it's, it's my understanding, they haven't asked for anything we haven't agreed to. And it's contained in your staff recommendations that we would do everything, so.
Joel, or Rusty, could either one of you comment? I mean, is there something there for this, this applicant to participate in traffic improvements
I guess, city engineers reviewed it. We've asked for everything that we think we need from the city's perspective with respect to rezoning. Are there any additional things that you would like to see?
My concern specifically is the U-turns there at the Panda Express. When you're, when you're, when you're, when I'm coming home from work and we have the three lanes of traffic coming up Spring Road, and the cars that are actually queuing to do U-turns to turn in front and go back the other direction on, on Spring, they back up into the third lane that is going, you know, continuing, the through lane, the right, the, excuse me, left turn lane. The left turn lane backs into the fastest lane through lane. And so, just, you know, again, whether or not there's improvements planned for that.
I guess the issue would be, is that, is that related to this development, or is that?
Well, it's 107.
Is that a city, city issue?
It's 107 new rooms, and the traffic, I mean, I did see the traffic study that you provided in the application, and, you know, the number of trips generated didn't seem that excessive, but it's still, you know, it's gonna add, there'll be more cars doing U-turns at Panda Express.
Yeah, I think that what I would, you know, respond with is, is that if this were developed for another retail use, and especially if it was not combined with the existing hotel where the access is combined, then you would have that bigger issue with U-turns, because you could have this as a commercial establishment with only one access to Spring Hill. So, I mean, I think the opportunity here is to be able to combine these, have these parcels developed together with one hotel with two access points, so. But your, your point's well-taken, that there are problems there, but I think Mr. Martin's comment that it's a system problem, not a project problem, because there's thousands and thousands of cars on Spring.
Right.
Spring Road, and we can't be responsible, but we're here to, you know, anything we can do by ourselves.
And the other part of this is, right now, these properties are, there's two properties involved in this. It's two separate properties, so we can't preclude them from having an entrance and force them to consolidate entrances on Spring Road. We can make the request and write it into a stipulation that they, you know, tried to address that with the adjoining property owner, but I don't think we can mandate it at that point.
Excuse me, can we, can we get the site plan put back up?
Right. I understand what you're saying. You have no control over the adjacent property owner. You can't make them do something. They're not before us, this owner is. So, I do, I understand that you can't control it, it's just the good faith effort.
Mr. Staub's? Thank you. Never mind. So, what, basically, Mr. Phillips, you're, what you can't see, I guess, is where the adjacent property has an outlet on Spring Road, and you're saying you'd like for those to be combined, and the response that I'm hearing is it's very difficult when you have multiple property owners.
Right, yeah. It's a very light gray line. They're right on the property line. I mean, their site plan has their drive right on the property line, and so, I mean, you'd be back-to-back two driveways.
All right, well, how about this? Has there been any discussion with the adjacent property owners?
This is Mr. Sam's case, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd have to circle back with Mr. Sam's. He, he represents both property owners.
And there is, that's right, never mind. And there is, there is access off of Spring Hill, correct?
That is correct.
It's not illustrated here because of all the requested variances?
That's correct.
So, the U-turn situation, they should put a nasty note in all the rooms that says, "No U-turns on Spring Road," or "You don't get cookies at night." Or we just ban U-turns altogether in Smyrna.
There's, there's another thing that we can do, and I've had this happen in other cases, where you can interface with Google Maps, and, and when people run directions here, Google Maps, and I'm not gonna tell you that I know this backwards and forwards, but, you know, it might tell you rather than try to do U-turn to go.
U-turn to take a left-hand turn.
Into Spring Hill Parkway. That's something that I think would be proactive for my client to do, is to reach out to Google Maps, and apparently they're very responsive with that kind of thing, so that it.
Well, God knows that if it doesn't say it on the map, they're not gonna do it, right?
Unfortunately.
It's a good idea.
Cumberland, Cumberland Boulevard and Spring Road is probably our worst operating intersection in the city.
Could we just have Officer Steve stand out there and taze everybody that there's U-turns at Spring Road? Is that, is that bad?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure you enjoy it, but I don't think we could do it.
We'll be doing, we'll do practices out here at the Market Village here shortly. All right. Any other questions or concerns? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Anybody else?
I would just echo Mr. Phillips' comments, that the traffic on Spring is atrocious and U-turns are a problem right there, and any, I support the need for hotels over in that area, absolutely, and just would encourage any good faith effort to address any traffic opportunity there, whether that's through maps or, you know, merging the entrance there with the adjacent property.
Thank you, sir. All right. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Now is the time. The record show that 107 new rooms has no opposition or comment from the public. All right. Any further discussion? At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion with no U-turns. Which ward? It's your ward, no?
I don't actually have.
All right, well, would somebody please give Mr. Phillips the option? All right, thank you very much. Mr. Phillips, we have a motion to?
A motion to approve with the condition that the, they do make a good faith effort to resolve the joint dri, or the back-to-back driveways.
Good faith effort. I like it. Do we have a second? Mr. Seagraves, who in favor, please vote on the motion to approve the application as presented with the stipulation related to a good faith effort. The application, thank you so much, is approved, six zero. Mr. Huff, you're batting a thousand tonight. All right. The next item on our agenda is 2022-193. It gets much darker in here, I'm not gonna be able to read my notes. Zoning request Z22-007 to allow rezoning from R15 to R10 for a two-lot subdivision at a density, thank you so much, at a density of 4.29 units per acre. It says .466 acres, landlot 489. It's 1195 Hill Street, David Gann and Donna Mathis. Mr. Staub's, the background, please. This is cool.
Thank you. This, your recommendation will go to mayor and council on May 16th. Subject property is 1195 Hill Street, a little under half an acre. There is an existing single-family home on the property. They are requesting to subdivide the property to add an additional single-family home. Existing, the existing property is zoned R15, and the requested zoning is to R10. Future land use is moderate-density residential, as well as most everything around it. The proposal would be dwellings per unit acreage of 4.29, so it'd be under the 4.5 unit. so it'd be under the four-point-five units per acre of moderate density. This is the subject property. Currently, it's, like I said, about half an acre. They are looking to add a lot line in the middle to create a new lot. It'll have the R-10 setbacks of front twenty-five, side seven-and-a-half, rear of twenty-five. They're proposing stormwater management in the fronts and then a side entry garage. It will require a variance for the driveway setback from five feet to one, one foot. We're requesting right-of-way dedication along Hill Street. And it said that there, there's two variances requested, one for the driveway, one for the existing garage. The existing home has a garage that's over twenty-five percent of the primary structure. It's actually thirty-five percent. So with this request, that would be part of the request to keep it as it is. Here's a proposal of the front elevation. Pictures of the subject property and adjacent properties. That's recommending approval, the rezoning from R-15 to R-10. The standard conditions. Special conditions regarding the setbacks. It should be R-10 setbacks, front twenty-five, side seven-and-a-half, rear twenty-five. Minimum lot size will be ten thousand square feet. Minimum lot width will be fifty feet. Minimum driveway length is twenty-two feet. Minimum driveway setback of one foot. The detached garage on track B will be a maximum of thirty-five percent. Right-of-way dedication, dedication along Hill Street and then the five-foot sidewalk and grass strip along Hill Street. There's a retaining wall on the property. We're just asking for construction details of that retaining wall before permitting. Maximum height of thirty-five feet. And then they'll have to meet fire access requirements, water and sewer and stormwater management requirements. Approval is based on the site plan submitted with the application and in compliance with the elevation submitted with the application. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Staub? Thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about the application. Man. Let me guess, you got a handout?
Mr. Sam's told me he was going to be out of town. He asked if I'd handle a case in Smyrna. He didn't mention the other two cases.
He just split it into three. That's nice.
And I, my clients are sitting right here in the front row and they're anxiously awaiting. And as you said, I've got a pretty good batting average so far. Let's, you know.
Let's not mess with it. Baseball night.
I could walk out of here and say sixty-six percent's a pretty good batting average.
Yeah, well, let's, let's not do that. They wouldn't be very happy.
No.
Mr. Huff is back at the microphone for his clients.
Yeah, for the record, my name is Parks, Health and Law Firm with Sam Zlark and Huff, and I represent Mr. Gann and Ms. Mathis in relation to this rezoning before you. This is an opportunity for them to build their home. And they have hired Colville Klein to do the designs you can see from the handout. As you very well know, they are very good at what they do and they would like to be able to develop this property for their, their home. The existing home would remain. There is a small accessory structure, an existing garage behind, and staff has dealt with that with a proposed condition. They did what good proposed new homeowners do is they sent out a message to the surrounding community using the social media and asked, you know, "Please, this is what we're proposing on this property. You've seen the yellow sign. Please reach out to us if you have any questions or concerns." And they have not received any questions or concerns because this is very consistent with what you have in this area. I mean, you've got a combination, I mean, this is, there's townhomes at the corner, up, up Atlanta Road, kind of adjacent to the fire station. This is further, a little behind. And you've seen some wonderful new homes come in back in this area. And so this is very consistent with, with the kind of development that you've seen in this area. And they're being welcomed by the community. They've had communication with their neighbor to the left, which is most impacted, and they support the proposal. So we ask that you follow your staff recommendation as shown to you by Mr. Staub and recommend approval of this to the Mayor and Council. And my clients are here. They can answer specific questions. But they, this is their home for them to live in and they look forward to your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Bentley?
I just, I just have one question. So the new house you're building, you intend to live in that?
That's correct.
So what are the plans for the existing house?
The, the existing house will remain and it will, you know, it'll be at, maybe potentially a rental for periods of time. They also anticipate maybe a family member moving into that house. But they're going to own, they're at the, they're, they're foreseeable future. They intend to own both homes, their new home and this existing home.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? This, thank you, Mr. Huff. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Amazing. I've done work in this neighborhood. I'm amazed that there's no one here. That, that's a credit to your clients.
Yeah, I, I, they, they reached out and as I said, they did the great thing, reached out to everybody.
If you weren't batting a thousand already, I would have, I would have challenged that no one called. Like, they may have answered the question, but then no one called. But anyway, all right, that's enough of me. Any further discussion or questions about this application? Okay, can I get a motion on this application, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Bentley, a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Hold on. Mr. Phillips, a motion to approve, Mr. Bentley. A second, Mr. Phillips, but Mr. Rice slid in there to the top somehow. Just so you know, he, he. Please vote. Okay, this application is approved six-zero. I'm surprised that there's no stipulation about renaming this something other than the Gann House. I do believe there's a Gann House in this town that's been here for a long time. Would like to congratulate Mr. Huff on batting a thousand tonight and doing it in a very efficient manner. Not that we in any way have a problem with your partner coming in here and educating us and improving our cocktail vernacular, ever. All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion before we approve the minutes? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting, please? Have a motion, Mrs. Straga. I have a second. Mr. Seagraves, the hardest-working board member tonight. Should get a ring with that. Please vote on the minutes as presented. The minutes are approved six-zero. Good luck with all your plans. Good luck being our new neighbors. Good luck with your new store. Good luck tasing folks out on Spring Road. Meeting's adjourned at six-fifty-eight. What? It's right here.